This meeting is called to order. Today is November 28, 2023, the 7:08 with the 3rd of the rules, please.
It's Councilman Frye.
Present.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury.
Present.
Councilman Khor.
Yes.
Councilman Alsmirry.
Yes, present.
Councilman Hassan is not present. Mr. Mayor, you are there. We have a quorum.
Do we have any community announcements?
I think we have another list.
Nigration.
Nigration.
I didn't actually post it, did we? We'll put it out. I didn't have it on this one.
We still have one more meeting, okay.
Yeah, plus we'll put it on social media and we'll...
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get it all out. So in fact, Greg just sent us the rough draft.
All right, so we move to proclamations, recognitions, and presentations. And we have presentation, redevelopment-ready community program overview, community and economic development.
Which one?
Yeah.
Great, great. Ron, if you could bring up the presentation. Hi, Mayor, hi, Council. Good to see you. So I realized it was a couple of years since the city started participating in this program, over three years ago. So what I wanted to do is just do a very brief overview of what the program is. It's a Michigan program. What are the benefits of participating? Just so that we have that background knowledge. Because it was so many years ago when we actually first agreed as a city to participate in the program. Are you able to make that point?
Okay, because it's not a PowerPoint.
Okay. Next time we'll do that. Okay. So if you look at this first page, this is the website for redevelopment-ready communities. It has all of the official tools on it. So if you want to check out any particular point, more details, you can look on that website. What I'm doing today is a very unofficial, just quick overview, you know, I don't, you know, of the program. So you can put it down. Perfect. So what is it basically? It's a voluntary technical assistance initiative offered through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. It focuses on best practices in the areas of planning, zoning, and economic development. So cities choose voluntarily to participate in this program across the whole state of Michigan.
Can you sponsor one? I'm going to move the TV so it's a little... And I did, just to head up, I did recommend that we get another TV.
Another one? To see this direction. So hopefully we'll have that as a resolution next time around. Okay.
You'll push it back?
Just so far safe. Okay. Can it still be seen in the audience?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good, yeah, you're in a good spot. So why become redevelopment-ready? So the reasons that they state on their own website is to be vibrant and competitive, to be ready for development, to be able to attract and retain businesses, to offer superior customer service, to have a streamlined development process, and to make sure all pertinent and important information is available around the clock online. And so those are the reasons, you know, why this process exists. Under this program, there are six best practices, and I'm not going to go through them today. But basically, there's six things that you need to adhere to under the program, six best practices. We'll go to the next slide. So any participating city can choose to be essential certified or full certified. So this talks about, you know, some of the differences between the two levels. We can, I think originally, we started pursuing essentials. It doesn't really matter, but there's more benefits that come with a full certification. And I'm going to go into all these benefits, but some of them are that we get assistance from a community planner. There's a library that has amazing materials available, like a digital library. There's lots of training opportunities. There's a technical grant, match funding. And there's, for certified communities, there's additional grants and there's additional marketing support for our vacant sites. So we'll just go to the next slide. So I see it as three big benefits. So this would be the first one. So technical assistance, you say I put a person kind of on the right side. Basically, this is a person who is almost like a free consultant. I call them all the time to ask questions. And we actually do not have to pay for it. Most times when you use a consultant, you have to pay. But I call them and I say, hey, we're working on this kind of zoning initiative or we need an economic development strategy for industrial or we need, you know, and they're available on the phone and by email to provide that experience. And then this is the website of the library. So you can't really see it here, but it talks about planning, zoning, development boards, commissions, site guides and templates. So there's guides and templates from other cities that have implemented some of these best practices. So it'll be like, you know, you might pick one of the topics and it'll drop down and say, well, this is what Southfield's doing. This is what Dearborn's doing. This is what Novi is doing. And then we can look at those models that are highlighted as these guys are doing a good job with this. And, you know, you can kind of copy some of those models. So this is a technical assistance library. Has been super helpful. We already have access to this library and we use it all the time. So you can go to the next one. So if we ever get to the point where we have completed our certification, we're fully certified, one of the most amazing benefits is that they help with marketing, marketing materials. And the technical assistance for marketing, really key sites. So this is an example from Novi. You can take one and pass it down.
Sure.
But basically, you know, imagine if we, as you guys know, you know, we might have at one point, we might need to redevelop the jail site. So imagine if we had these marketing materials that said, this is what Hamtramck has to offer. This is how big the site is. This is what the zoning is for. This is the price. This is the contact person. If you look at this site in Novi, that's not actually there. That's just what someone drew up as an image concept. Because as you know, people are won over by images more than a whole bunch of text. So if you think about several sites we have, like the jail site or the BASF site, which is on the other side of the highway, basically, once we get certified, they will help us with creating these data and marketing materials to be very proactive in, okay, what kind of companies are we going to attract to these sites? And, you know, getting these packages, they're called property information packages together. So that's some of the assistance that they help us with. You can go to the next one. So some of this, some of the certified cities near Hamtramck, and by near, I mean really in metro Detroit, they have already completed the process. Include Novi, Southfield, Ferndale, Rochester Hills, Roseville, East Point, Oak Park, Farmington, Dearborn, and Romulus. So all of those cities have completed the process of becoming a certified city near us. But there are 70 cities in the state that have, you know, across the state of Michigan that have completed the process. And this is also from the website. So if you are a developer and you're looking for a place to plant, put your manufacturing plant or a mall or whatever you're trying to build, you could also use this website to look up sites as a developer. I want a site that has these specifications. So you can go to the next. So for example, Ferndale, which has completed the process, you know, these are their property results that are being marketed, not just by the city, but also by the state through this website. So here are a couple of the results. Go to the next page. This is, Dearborn has 12 properties listed. Again, the state helps with the marketing of those 12 sites. And also they assist with matchmaking and like kind of putting developers together with sites to get those sites active again. You can go to the next slide. In addition, for certified communities that are full certified, they have more grants available. So there's grants for emerging developers. That means you're doing one of your first three projects. So you can't have done, you know, 10 projects and you come in and you ask for one of these grants. But if you're kind of new at the business of building and redeveloping property, they have a lot of grants available for emerging developers. But we would need to be in good standing with the program for them to give those grants to those developers in Hamtramck. Match on Main is another grant. Those are more for local businesses that are already in existence. And those grants are up to $25,000 per business. I actually have a handbook here. So those grants could be used to support new or expanding businesses, basically just growing their business. If you think of any of our businesses here, they could apply for those grants as well. You can go to the next page. Again, I'm not going to go through all the best practices today because I just wanted to talk about what the program is, who participates, why to participate. But this handbook is online. I also attached it as an attachment today. I'd say we're about 75% of the way there in terms of meeting all of the standards that they have. We have about 25% to go. If you have any questions about the six best practices, they are in this handbook. And they also do a lot of seminars and pre-training as well, which, you know, elected officials and staff are welcome to attend. So that's basically an overview of the program. And that's it.
I have one question. The Match on Main grant.
Mm-hmm.
Any business you're developing or expanding your business?
Yeah, the Match on Main grant, we're not eligible for yet. We would have to finish the process. But basically, I'm not super familiar with it, but it could be if they're trying to, maybe they need to buy more computers or they want to hire more staff or they need a loan to fix their building. I believe those are the types of things that a business could, not a loan, a grant. I misspoke when I said loan. You know, those are the types of projects that would apply for the Match on Main.
Business owner provide you some kind of documentation, the business?
Yeah, they have two kinds of grants. So one is for, you know, redeveloping property, which are much bigger amounts because you need, you might need $100,000 or more to redevelop a property. And then these are smaller, you know, expanding your business grants. And they're 25, max of $25,000 per business. And I don't know, no one in Hamtramck yet has applied for those. I don't know the entire process, but I know that they're available.
Okay, for you, because we're going to discuss the business people that might interest for those programs.
Yeah, but that's only available after you've finished the certification process. Yeah. So those grants, we can't really apply for them at this point, but they would become available at some point, you know, once we finish. Yeah.
I got a question. So this is a program that if we get certified, are we in, are we quite in this kind of program? Do we have to follow everything that's on this? You know, from, let's say if there's a plan, it has to go through the planning commission and then sometimes it will have to get approved from council.
Yeah, so there's two levels. You can be like basic and like high level certified. And that handbook explains all of the things. And we do have to meet every standard to be involved, to get the benefit. So if we want that marketing assistance, like, you know, I just handed out, if we want the grants, we do need to meet everything in that handbook.
And that's, it always has to be from the planning, correct?
Well, I was going to talk about that specific ordinance in two weeks because that's when we have a public hearing. And so I don't want to talk too much on that detail because we have a public hearing on that specific ordinance, you know, or that set of ordinances in two weeks. What I want to do today is say, you know, this is what the program is. These are some of the benefits. These are some of the other communities that do it. It is voluntarily. We don't have to do it. It's kind of like, we do this and then these are the benefits that come from the program. But yeah, no, they will not, we need to mark every checkmark basically on the list. Like you can't be like, we want to do 80% and we're not going to do the other 20.
And that was my question.
Yeah.
Do we have to follow it 100%?
You do have to follow 100%. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any additions to the agenda?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I'd like to add resolution 23-175 to the agenda. Second.
Okay, thank you. And that resolution is?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is it added to the consent agenda? Because usually we do those during the consent agenda, so.
After the business?
Yeah, well, there's not really much discussion on that.
Yes.
So the consent agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I want to add the discussion about the last Friday shooting on Kenneve. I need some more explanation from the police chief, what happened and what is the position right now? Forty that go, 27 round shooting. Limited, I mean still.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
To the discussion.
Discussion, yes. Sure.
And discussion on, say that one more time if you don't mind.
The shooting, yes.
Mr. Mayor. I think that it should be actually discussed and not on the consent agenda.
That's why I say it's a discussion.
This is the new business.
New business on the resolution 23.
But what is?
So the police shooting on Kenneve Street on, I think last Friday you said it.
It's not a police shooting.
Not a police shooting, I'm sorry. It's good, but there's a shooting on, I don't know more details from the police chief.
Was it a random shooting on?
Random shooting.
Okay, thank you. That's why I was asking for certification.
All right, so. 175. So all in favor of adding 175 to the consent agenda?
That's, that's one more. That's got to go to new business.
I'm sorry, hold on. They already approved the consent agenda. Wait, no, they, I'm sorry, rewind. We have to vote on adding the consent to the consent agenda. Then we can do your, then when they completed.
Yeah, that's why I said 175.
Wait, so I'm saying that we cannot put this on the consent agenda.
No, no, 175 for the appointment.
No, no.
The 175 for appointments needs to be discussed in the business as we have done.
There's reasons.
Yes.
Okay.
We just do it?
Okay.
Just we have a new business.
All right.
Okay, so we're doing adding resolution 2023-175 to new business D.
Thank you. Yes.
All right. Okay. I think Ron wasn't on the same page.
Yeah. So now can we vote on that addition?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's for the first one, right?
Yes.
And then motion by Councilman Mahmoud.
Second by the.
To add discussion on shooting on Kenneve to new business D. And can we vote on that, please?
All right.
Everybody's in favor?
Yes.
And now we need to, now is the full approval on the amended agenda. So I need a.
Need a motion, I think?
A motion, please.
I motion.
Second.
And this is a vote to approve amended agenda.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so now we have three items in the new business. And we move to the public conference.
Mr. Bill Meyer?
Come on, Billy, you know you aren't that.
All right. So I was hoping to be here at the, break a record as the shortest council meeting this year, but apparently it's not going to be maybe. But I just want to, I don't really have a lot to say a little bit. And I just feel really pleased with what's going on in the city. I'm probably living in Hamtramck and I'm sure you all feel that way. This is a unique city that, that a lot of people are missing. They should come here and see what this is. It's very unique anyways. I do want to say that I see a lot of trust and respect going on in the city now between workers, between elected officials and stuff. And this is critical so that we can go forward with the problems and solve the problems we have. And I don't want to pick on anybody specifically, but I really, we've had a lot of city managers over the years. As you know, I think 12 or something like that. I really think our current manager of city managers, probably the best we've had. I mean, he's the person that can work with everybody. He's qualified and I'm very happy that Max Garbino became our city manager. And just picking on one person, but I'm happy about all of it. I think it's working very well. And congratulations for the new council member who's going to be joining us soon too. And I know it's going to be a thrill to keep working together with everybody. I'm sorry we're losing Aimee, but he's committed to the city, so I'm not worried about that. He's going to keep helping us. I think, so as I was coming in, I noticed now that the mayor has an office that he's using in City Hall. That's very nice to have appointments there and to actually meet with the mayor if any public wants to do that. You also have an office for clerks, for council members, which would be nice if you maybe set some sort of time when someone could come in at a certain time to see you. But I don't know if that's possible. And I'm very pleased that department heads are showing up to council meetings when it's relevant and being here to answer questions. That's really important. Okay. So. All right, okay, I want to talk about small businesses. You know, I just read today, I got an email that Abraham Ayesh is, we're doing a great job in Lansing. And he just put a bill in Congress there that is going to help small businesses. I didn't read it close enough and I don't know exactly what it is, but maybe you should check into that because I think that's a critical thing here in Hamtramck is help these businesses develop, open up and develop. There's still a lot of empty places on Joseph Campo. I still think there's a problem with the DDA structure. The concept of having a DDA does not solve the whole problem in the city. It just takes care of one street. You really need something like a Hamtramck Business Association that's going to include the opportunity for every business in the city to be part of this network of business owners to work together for the whole city instead of having one little small area on Joseph Campo. So as far as the kind of businesses we need, can I get another minute?
Yes, you can.
Okay, well, you have to, are you going to decide? Okay. Okay, I've always said this, I think you need to take surveys in the city. Excuse me, Aimee, all right, this is important for you.
Sure.
Yeah, I think you should take a survey, a public survey of what kinds of businesses people in the city think they need in the city, which kind of businesses will keep them staying in the city, to shop in the city. Because we just don't need new businesses. We need the right kind of businesses. You can't come here with like a water ski shop or something like that and expect to do, get and ask for grants and all this sort of stuff and bomb on your business. You've got to have the right kind of business. 10 or 12 grocery stores might be enough. I mean, another four or five is too much. So how can we solve that? You could solve it by surveys. You can, the city maybe can organize something like this. Go to as many residents as possible with a list of options. Let them check out things that they would shop at if they came in, if the new business showed. And then when, it'll attract businesses of that type to the city knowing that the residents actually want that kind of a business in the city. There's ways to bring the right kind of business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, bye.
Mr. Nasser Hussain.
I want to talk about the best practices in the handbook on page 16, approval authority. What they want is site plans for permitted uses are approved either administratively by the staff, then the council approves it, or by the planning commission. So you have a choice if you read the book, not just, I don't know what the city says on the planning commission. We have experience with the planning commission. It takes too long. I remember when we built the first building for the mosque, it took us almost one year to get the approval on the plans. But I've been sitting, you present the plans to the staff, they review it, then a month, they have a meeting for the planning commission. Then usually they tell you, okay, we want this change or this change, small things. Then you have to wait another month to do the changes because they meet only once a month. And let's say the second month, there's no quorum. A third month till the approval. And then it comes to council approval. So I think the best thing to do is, follow the, their book says, I contacted and emailed a lady named Elizabeth King that was two years ago. And she said, we don't care as long as the process is fast, either the planning commission or the staff. And I think the staff is their option. Because if there is an addition or a modification, you could do it in two days, bring it back to the staff and the staff approve it. So I think you should keep it as is. The staff reviews it and brings it to you and you approve it. And if somebody even for the planning commission has issues, they could easily look at the agenda, look at the plans and if they see there is something illegal or something, a mistake, they could come and talk to you and it will stop the approval process. All this activity we see in Hamtramck, it's happening for a reason. Before it was very hard to do houses or buildings. Now it's easy because maybe some of you have experience with the planning commission. It takes too long. So I would ask you to keep it as is, keep it with the staff, they review it, they bring it to you for final approval. But this, and this has nothing to do with your approval of the program. Says this 3.15 that it could be done by the staff or the planning commission. You have a choice. It doesn't have to be the planning commission. One more thing, I think the DDA, after the previous mayor have left, you should pay attention to Joseph Campo. I go there, see it's dirty. DDA could pay the city or you have a sweeper, goes there every month and clean. It's time to clean up the DDA district. You pay money and it doesn't make sense to spend it for one business. Pay them before they assign, the whole district is dirty. But, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this was a public conference.
Mr. Mayor, did you, Ms. Parker's still here if you want to ask some pointed questions? I don't know if that's amenable by you based upon the comments.
What about this issue that Nasr just talked about? Last time we discussed that and there was misunderstanding. Some council members thought that we're trying to strip away their power or undermine their power by not sending it to the council. But we only send it to the council for final approval. We never reject anything here. We always approve it. But he's talking about the steps to get things done fast. So it's either by the staff or by the planning commission, which means if it's by the staff and there's something missing, you can come the next day and provide the staff and get it done. You don't have to wait a month for the next meeting to, and maybe another issue would rise and then you have to wait another month. So if it's by the staff, you get everything done there, then they send it to us for final approval. I think that's where we misunderstood last time. The council is still have, you know, the power to just approve or reject at the end. But the step-by-step process is approved by the staff or the planning commission. So that and for the DDA, we, I mean, we, I think we just approved last month the budget for cleaning, shoveling the snow and stuff. So I think they will start functioning soon with the new contractor. The appointment we have for the DDA, I know we had a person from the Bengali community. He never showed up for the past six months. So we removed him because there was four meeting in a row. But we still have empty spot and I'm still seeking how to bring someone to represent the Bengali community. This person who was appointed today, it's not necessary to replace the one who was removed because we still have other spots vacant. So we're still looking for.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilman Aimee taking off this one. He can be on this committee. I've posted his name.
I appreciate that. Actually, it's my tax season. I'll be busy with the taxes in this January through almost June, you know. People do it, still coming in and doing their tax returns for 2022.
Do I hear a motion?
But and then, who knows? Allah knows best, whatever.
We'll be in touch.
That'll work. Yeah. But thanks for, um.
Thank you.
The recommendation, sir.
What, motion?
Second. I need a break. It's gonna.
That and.
Was that on record, that second?
Someone's seconded.
All right, so we move to the consent agenda. And this is approved in a single motion with no discussion. We have approval of minutes from the November 14, 2023, regular city council meeting. B, approval of envoys registered date ending November 28, 2023. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending November 27, 2023. D, resolution 2023-172 approving street closure for Punch Key Run. E, resolution 2023-173 approving cancellation of the regular city council meeting scheduled for December 26, 2023. Thank you, motion. Okay, so we added this one to?
No, no. To the new business.
We were going to, but then we moved it.
We moved it.
By the attorney.
All right, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we have no public hearing and we move to the new business. We have the first resolution 2023-174 approving purchase agreement and subsequent purchase of 2963 Council.
Motion?
Second. And before we start discussion, I, I know that we, the city reached out to the owner to ask him if he's willing to sell this property. We have removed this from the agenda three times. And finally, the owner is telling us today, we have to decide either yes or no because he want to move on, either to sell to the city or to someone else because we keep holding him from moving forward. So I want the city to decide tonight whether we should buy it or not. Because the owner is telling us, I want to move forward and you guys are holding me. So he will say yes or no tonight.
That's what I heard.
So if the city really needs this lot, we have to decide. If not, we can say no so he can move on because he's saying that other people wants to buy from him.
to buy from him.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'll let the table list to the next council meeting, and there's a reason why. As our city manager, there's a plan for the DPS building that they're trying to, as soon as we move from our, you know, current building, there's a huge plan that they're trying to do for our DPS, where they, you know, they want multiple units, lots. One of them, it's this one here that we're talking about today, and there's one behind it. There's been talks with the second owner, if he's able to sell. I was able to reach out to him, and hopefully there's, you know, there's a way of us trying to get those two lots, and if possible, we can bring those to the next council meeting, both purchases. If that works out, if not, this will come next council meeting, and then we will approve it during the next council meeting. So I would like to table it.
Are we under condition that we either buy both or none? Is that what we're trying to do?
I think basically what the councilman is saying that is, he's hoping that we can finalize the negotiation on the other lot as well, and to bring them both to you as a package deal. However, if we are unable to finalize the deal on the second one as well, we still want this one because it is very advantageous for us nonetheless, not ideal, but still we'll make it work. So I believe what the councilman was saying is, if we're unable to secure the deal with the other owner, then we will bring this one back at the next meeting to finalize it.
So I understand, but if we, if it is already decided that we are buying this one, why do you have to connect it with the other one? I mean, the thing is that the owner is telling us, please decide yes or no tonight, because I want to move forward. We keep holding him. That's the thing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That's exactly what I was going to say, that we have one option right now on the table. We are getting this chance to purchasing it for the city. If we table it, and then what if that person back out?
It's possible.
Would that leave, I mean, back out, then we lose that one, then we chasing another property. We wouldn't be winning any of those. I mean, you know, I mean, I see where you're coming from, you want to get it all in one, but we have one on the table, which will allow us to at least get hands on it, get the city purchased it and secure the property, will help us to get the DPS situated, you know. I would strongly think that if we have that option now, we should consider to buying this property today. But it's all up to the council.
I mean, it's up to you guys, but I, we heard today that the owner wants to say yes or no, because he's, he wants to move forward with selling it to other people if we are not interested. So, like you said, we may end up losing it, and it's in between this one and the other one. We will not benefit from having that.
I apologize, but nobody even seconded. To me, I was like, we motioned, but nobody seconded.
I got a second.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I got a second.
Thank you.
All right, so what we, we can continue the discussion, and you guys have to decide, because it seems like the owner is pissed that we keep moving it, tabling it.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, it's not going to hurt if you attend another council meeting.
But I'm afraid that he wants to change his mind, and that way we'll...
I promise you, he's never going to change his mind.
He probably...
Yes.
And that's a promise, on record. He's never going to change his mind. You know, he waited, it's not a problem that he's going to wait until the next council meeting, you know, and it's not a problem.
So the question is, we are getting this one, but it's still trying to get the other one. So why can't we decide for this one and continue the negotiation with the other one?
That would be wise.
Next meeting, we just hold for that one for the next meeting, when we done that one. If we make it both, it's okay. If it's not, we can move the other, the first one.
Well, right now, I tabled it, he seconded it, so it's either we vote to table it, or we can just move on.
Take the bottom table.
So did your motion officially table, or he seconded it?
Yes.
So they have the vote of tabling, and then if not, then you vote on the...
Mr. Chair.
You vote not to take.
He's the one who says. Go on.
So, I don't know the full part of the story yet. So now I heard it, he is threatening, he is telling us he might change his mind. If he changes mind, we're going to lose it. Or I'm just, I'm just doing my part. I'm a good mayor, maybe we, part of those we're going to approve today, and second part, if we get the, because you know the other client, we did the other, other, other next meeting.
Yeah, and the guy saying he signed the agreement four months ago, and we are holding him. So that's the, that's the, he wants a decision tonight, yes or no. So it's up to you guys. Today, I can't even break the tie because we are fine. I have no...
Mr. Chair, I think I'd like to add another thing. I think our city manager also went out with a way to reach out to the owners rather, or owners, right?
I mean, we're actively trying to negotiate with the other one.
There was a little bit of work done on that.
My preference is to put one in bed and move on, but whatever the council decides is what we'll work with.
Yeah, we'll see. So, okay, so you guys want to...
Ron, did Councilman El-Samiri second the tabling motion or the original? Somebody did?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just, I want to clarify.
Yeah, that's why I interrupted the discussion. Can we vote on this motion now?
We can vote on the table.
Thank you. Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Do you want to wait until next week?
Yes, table it.
You're voting if you want to table to next week?
No.
Okay. Councilman Chaudry?
No.
Councilman Mahmoud?
No.
Councilman El-Samiri?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion failed.
So now, you vote on the original motion?
Unless there's another, yeah.
I mean, I suppose it's part of the same, they already discussed it.
Yeah, this one sort of is crossed.
Before, before, can we discuss it?
We're done, we have no, we're done. They said it's done. Yes.
So call a vote.
No, again.
So...
The clarification misses for the purchase.
Yeah. So now we're voting on approving resolution twenty-two-three one seventy-four, approving the purchase agreement. Councilman El-Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty-two-three one seventy-four approved.
All right, thank you. All right, we move to the next resolution, which is twenty-two-three one seventy-five, and that's approving appointment of Faris Al-Halmi to the DDA.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
No, sir.
All right, so like I said, this is a new appointment, and then we still have vacant spots for, I want to diversify the DDA, so there's a hope that I can get a Bengali businessman from the downtown area, and there is an African-American lady, business owner in Joseph Campo that's interested, I heard, so we will have a better representation of the community in the DDA. So we can go ahead and vote on that one.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El-Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty-two-three one seventy-five approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution twenty-two-three one seventy-six, for discussion, the shooting incident that happened on Kniff.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, the chief here, to speak on this topic.
Good evening. Pardon my voice, I'm losing my voice. So I can tell you what, some, there's very, very limited information I can give you about this. This is an ongoing police investigation. We are still canvassing the area, hoping that people will come forward that may have seen something, but I can tell you, as of very late into Thursday night, Friday morning, the police department was notified of some property damage that had occurred in the area of Holmes and between Kay and Fleming. There appeared to be a gunshot round that had gone through the back of a residence on Holmes Street. A short time later, I'd say probably about an hour later or so, somewhere around there, they were notified of some property damage that had occurred on Kniff Street. Cambassing the area on Kniff Street, they noticed that there were shell casings in the area, on the sidewalk and in the street, things like that, which led them to believe, once they started talking to people, that people did admit that they had heard several gunshots in the area a little while earlier. However, at that time, no one had called the police that we were aware of. So again, I continue to urge the public, when you hear something, you have to report it. It gave lapse in our time of investigating the incident. Our officers did arrive right away, detectives have been investigating it immediately, looking for video in the area, things like that. So far, based on the limited information I can give you, is that the shot seemed to have come from a vehicle that was traveling in the area. It also, there was a, well, I'm sorry, I can't mention that part yet until we get a little farther than the investigation, but we're still trying to figure out if there was a target, if it was just a random someone just driving by, shooting off rounds, I mean, we're still trying to figure out the...
So, Mr. Mayor, a quick question. So according to someone, the baseball posting, there's twenty-nine, twenty-seven rounds shooting happens, what happened to our police patrolling? Has no one was patrolling the city that time?
There was, but this was, like I said, an isolated incident that happened on Kniff Street. It happened in a matter of seconds.
Well, why you can wait for the public to call you? If you hear the shooting, cops should be right there, right to me.
I mean, the officers could have been at the other end of the city. If they were down by Hamtramck Drive, they would have never heard the shooting on Kniff. If they were over on Conant Street, they might not, they might have heard shots, but they would have never have known where they came from.
Councilman, I can tell you from personal experience, even if you do hear the shots, it is next to impossible to even determine where they're originating from, short of someone in the close proximity knowing that that's where it is. I mean, we do, I mean, I still hear shots very often in the city, just because I know what I'm looking for nowadays, and you can almost never tell where they're even coming from.
It's like smelling smoke in the area, and you have no idea where it's coming from. It could be coming from, you know, outlying areas, it could be. So even if someone, you know, in the area heard shots, they wouldn't have known where they were coming from. That's why we have to urge residents. I mean, there were several residents who said that they heard the shots from inside their house, and they rolled over and went back to sleep. So the faster we can get on scene, the officers might have been able to see something, find something, things like that. And I hate to bring this up, but again, I have to urge you to please reconsider the license plate reader cameras. These would have been extremely helpful in this situation, because we would have had cameras placed strategically in the area that we wanted to place them, that may have captured a license plate, because we would have been able to take the video of the type of car we were looking for and matched it with a license plate that was in the area.
We've actually had several incidents recently, and we wish we had.
Our hands are tied with our investigations with the limited resources.
I think the City of Beaufort just passed a resolution allowing for those similar cameras, but with more, less restrictions than we would have.
But, you know, we continue to investigate this regardless. Like I said, if anybody has information, if they saw anything, heard anything, maybe they heard a car screeching away and looked out their window and saw a better description, you know, we can say it was a black whatever car, but if we don't have a license plate, it's not going to lead us anywhere. So we really need...
Chief, is it safe to say, based on unlimited knowledge you can divulge, that we do not believe there is an immediate future threat to the community?
That is correct, based on the information that we have available, as we think that this was an isolated incident.
Potentially a very isolated incident.
And we continue to investigate it, and we will, you know, do everything we can to, to try to get more information on this. Mr. Chair.
Councilman Chaudry, and then Councilman... I think Mr. Manager just nailed it on the spot. That's where we want to know, that if there is a future threat, if there's anything that we need to worry of that is going on, because every now and then we hear the shooting going on, you know, we had one pass on Kniff, it's about six months ago, right on the apartment in the liquor store. So these kind of things, you know, our neighbors, our citizens are scared, what's going on?
Right.
Are we, are we safe to be living in Hamtramck? The other thing, you know, the, there's cameras installed on other properties that can trace those drive-by shooting, that's what it is, is a drove-by shooting, and we can track that down. There was another incident along with that, that was a fatal accident too, right? The lady hit a pole or something, and then she died. Was it that same?
Yeah, so it was, it happened to be the same day, it was later in the day.
Later on the day, but same day. It was completely different day, but, you know, people mix up information, but...
Yeah, completely unrelated, and then, you know, we're investigating that as well. Michigan State Police came in and helped us, because they have experienced trained investigators on fatal accidents, so...
Sure.
You know, our thoughts are with our family, but we are investigating that as well, along with the Michigan State Police.
Very sad, yeah.
So, like I said, I assure you, we're doing everything. I believe Hamtramck is a safe community, I think a small community that's surrounded by a large metropolitan city. I think Hamtramck does a really good job in the community itself, and people reporting things, so I have to urge them to continue to report things as they see and hear them, so that we can do our jobs effectively.
And I think you guys are doing a good job. I mean, we can have a little better, more paying attention, and secure our residents and business owners and everyone. Thank you.
Chief, so for the license readers, is there still a grant for them?
These were going to be paid for out of narcotic forfeiture funds, which those funds are still available. You know, we can certainly bring a resolution back, if someone wants us to bring something back, we can bring back more information, we can have the company come back out and do another presentation, whatever. I just think that, and I understand the community's concerns, I understand your concerns, I know there was a lot of misinformation presented that night from, from people about our intentions and the intentions behind the cameras, but I assure you that these are the type of incidents that we're trying to help solve with the tools that are available out there in the public that we can use. Those are the only reasons that we want.
Candidly speaking, that's the future of this. I mean, this is where all the departments are going. I mean, they're proving this left and right, all over Metro Detroit. I mean, we're really behind the ball in this.
If you're worried about the, I would just restrict it to the days, you know, if you want to come up with a certain amount, thirty days or whatever, that they keep the, that's what they're worried about.
Safeguards. You know, that's all kinds. Safeguards. It's literally just for, exactly like this.
Mr. Mayor, a quick question, how many police cars stay on the patrol over the night? Is one or two?
It varies, but again, we don't like to, to throw on numbers, but, you know, it does vary.
Speak offline.
You know, we have gone to twelve-hour shifts, which make the officers out there in a longer period of time, as opposed to a three-shift rotation, we're down to two shifts, so they're out there longer, they're out there during more peak times of the schools getting out, things like that. We've made some changes to help.
Those kinds of incidents cause our residents many ways. Insurance goes up, you know, people feel unsecure, the city, it goes to the website, as many ways it's affected residents. We need to keep control of this somehow.
Yeah, I completely understand.
I'd argue strongly, please.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, crime is on the rise with the times that we have right now, and we've seen that, you know, since COVID and things like that.
I mean, it's a bigger city, there's difference. A two-square-mile city, you always announce that we have two-square-mile city. It's not going to take too long to make a quick trip.
And going along with that, that's what helps our response time, because the officers are there rather quickly in any event of any type of incident that they have, provided they're not on something equally as major. So our response time, being such a small city, is very, very good, and the fact that in the fact that they could have been there in a, in a very short amount of time, which they were once it was reported, but had, you know, a little suspicion they have seen something, but.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, any more discussion on this?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I will vote on this one. And we move to the reports. And, uh, I'll start with my report, which, uh, not much to say. We had a few activities over the past couple of weeks. I only can remember the attending of the, uh, Greater Cutaway Association of Michigan for the Bengali community. Uh, I was there, it was a good organized event. Um, and I want to thank the Bengali community for being probably the most active community when it comes to organizing and mobilizing in this city. And that's a good thing, it should be used as an example for the other communities. You know, um, I like, I enjoy attending such events. Uh, and I see the Bengali community as the most active when it comes to this event. Uh, they always keep me busy, which is okay. They always provide, you know, music and food and all the good stuff.
Thank you.
So thank you for, uh, being such, you know, engaged with everything in the community. Uh, I hope everybody enjoyed the holiday week last week. Uh, it, uh, it happens during ceasefire in Gaza, which also was such a relief for all of us because this is the major issue in the world today, and it affected us here too, uh, when it comes to hate crimes and feeling safe in, in our own country here. So hopefully it will last, um, and if the war wouldn't come back, we are praying for, um, peace and ceasefire over there. Um, that said, no more activities. Um, over the next couple of days, I'm moving to my new house, so. You can be busy, thank you. Uh, which is here in Hamtramck, some people. They said that I live outside Hamtramck, I don't know how they, they got that, but I live between McKay and, and filming where the shooting happened, so. So moving from that area to another.
Surely they will come even there.
So. No. I'm not going there.
So, Mr. Chair, you're gonna have an open house so people know where you live?
Uh, well, they will find out. So thank you, that, that was all I have for today, and Mayor Portem is not here to give his report, so, uh, if any of the city council members wants to talk for a little bit.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
First of all, congrats on the new house.
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody that showed up here tonight. Uh, there's, uh, sadly, like you mentioned about, uh, the accident that happened on, uh, Bromback, where, uh, you know, there was a deceased, an old lady. And, you know, and there's a lot of reasons why, because, and I'm not saying that incident, but, you know, and that's reason I, I'm always adding these stop signs. It's for these reasons that sometimes you have, these people are speeding like crazy. So I'm requesting, again, to add more stop signs. If you want to write these, I'll, I'll send you guys an email. One, Kajmir and Savajaski. Two, Gallagher and Trowbridge.
Well, slow.
Well, I'm gonna send you guys an email.
All right.
So just for record. Three, Gallagher in Yemen. Four, Bromback in Norwalk. Five, Bromback in Edwin. Six, Bromback in Yemen. Seven, Bromback in Balmat. Eight, McKay in Berger. Nine, McKay in Kajmir. So these is where are the schools. And I notice speeders are like crazy. And we, in, in these areas, either buses are stopping by, or you guys, kids are walking in that area. As we added stop signs near those schools, they're doing fine. Especially the one on Gallagher and between Lehman and, and Haley and Jacob, perfect. So I think by us adding these, they're nearby the schools. Uh, I did my, my, my research and study where I parked over there, I parked myself and, and noticed that people are just flying. Uh, so if we're able to have more stop signs and also more police present in those areas. Uh, thank you very much, and you guys have a great night, stay safe.
Send an email because I lost track after.
All right, no problem, I'll do that.
I tried, but.
That's a lot of them.
Any other reports? Mr. Chair, I'll go. No, please. Uh, first, congratulations, Mr. Mayor. On your new purchasing house. Uh, thank you so much for being here tonight, everyone, including the new council, uh, elect Councilman, uh, Motazin Sadman and Mr. Nasser, welcome back, and the young lady back there, I don't know her name, but thank you for being here and, and other two.
Don't forget, no.
Who, Bill, Bill is looking at me.
Bill's busy.
He's always here, so.
He's running the streets.
Yeah, riding down the street there. Well, I'd like to recommend this, this thing with Carolyn and talk about, the redevelopment ready program. This is one way to get the city moving forward, you know, redevelopment. I hope the cons, councilors consider this, to sign up, uh, to get the city improvement and economic and development programs. They really help out that lot for the city. Uh, I don't have much to say, but, uh, it's getting colder. Stay warm and keep your cars warm and, uh, you know, keep your family and things. As you know already, this is a cold season and many families are getting sick. So keep yourself, uh, distance and healthy, thank you. And you're ready for shoveling the snow. Shoveling the snow. And then I hope the salt res come out. I'm, I'm talking about our DPS. John is here. John is here. He's ahead of the game. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there's one more, I forgot, just to the residents and businesses.
You can take my turn.
Please, uh, just please try to, uh, you know, shovel the snow and pour some salt. You know, don't forget, you know, male, men and female, uh, sometimes we don't want them slip, and you ain't gonna get your check or, you know, please, so, you know, shovel and pour some salt. Also businesses, Joseph Campo, Conant, Hobro, uh, you know, try to shovel, uh, you know, make it safe for their, their, their residents or their neighbors and also to their, uh, customers.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, that's one of whom's card.
I hope we, must, everybody in the city of Hamtramck had a wonderful Thanksgiving, peaceful and enjoyable Thanksgiving. And last weekend, we had a whole city council attending Greater Chitung, um, society orientation. Uh, we enjoy there also. And we had a, um, city police chief already discussed some of the incident happen in Kniff. I hope we have more patrol coming in future and prevent those things. Finally, uh, alhamdulillah, after, after October seven, the massacre happened in Gaza, finally we hear a ceasefire. As a small, small city, City of Hamtramck, we, we make the noise, we try best of our ability, we try to, uh, make your noise to upper level, up to White House to do the ceasefire and stop killing the people, innocent people. And finally it happened, I hope it can be continued, and in future, we have to, we see the two countries, and they stay together and live together with the peace and dignity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so we done with the reports, and we move back to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have Bill Meyer.
Mr. Mayor, I removed myself from the box.
Oh.
He moved himself.
So there was a, a councilman who's not here, I don't, won't mention his name, but at the last meeting, I saw the video where he complained about people who don't come to council meetings when it has nothing to do with them. And I could see how that happened, but I just want you to let you know, I don't miss council meetings because I don't want to be here, I'm working or whatever, so, I mean, a lot of people feel that way. I'll be at everyone I can be at, and I don't pick and choose. So, uh, everything is important in the city, all, all the cultures. Um, so I was just curious, when you were talking about the police reports and stuff, it seemed like you were in the dark about what's going on with the police department. I mean, can't you just call the police department and ask, you know, what are the statistics? What are the, like, get a police report and find out how many people have been injured or shot or whatever like that? Can't you just ask before a council meeting and find out what you want to find? Is there no connection between the council and the, and the police department? I think there should be.
I mean, we can, but we still want to know, here, here, what the police chief is here physically, you know.
Yeah, well, that's good, but I mean, you can get more knowledge.
Know your concern and, you know.
Yeah, but you can come with more knowledge, and then, so I don't have to put her on the spot on it. Uh, anyways.
Well, she's head of the department, she should expect to be on the spot.
Okay, good. As far as, as far as the license plate reading, be sure and research it because, um, you don't make the same fatal mistake that was made with the parking meters and that we're stuck with for years. There's pros and cons for the license plate readers. There's good reasons to have one, and there's good reasons not to have one. Check them both out, check out all the reasons and decide if that's what you think the city needs. And, uh, I saw a sale on Facebook Marketplace for, uh, twelve stop signs for ten dollars, so I can order them and, and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Nasser Hussain.
Uh, we got the, the plate readers, I think you should bring your back. In this stage, there is no privacy, whatever you do. Everything is exposed now, so better have a plate readers, and if you could, you can straighten this meeting. Also, if you can install speed cameras, I know you can't give tickets if you have speed cameras, but then you could identify who's does the speeding. You just need one person to speak around Hamtramck, and the people will think everybody is speeding. Once you identify them, you can contact them and give them a warning. Uh, second, the punch key one, same problems happens, uh, every year. So I would rather the city produces a map for people who are within the area, how to exit the area, post it online, Facebook, and warn them before tomorrow will be a speeding camp. Everything will be blockaded, you have to take this route and this route, so it'll be easier for people. Uh, zoning board, I think you have two or three vacancies in the zoning board review, and nobody is filling them, you should, I think it's a council appointment. So if you know people who's interested, you could appoint them there. And, uh, I think for the stop signs, each intersection in Hamtramck should get a stop sign. We're a very small city, even people stop, it wouldn't take them two, three minutes extra to exit the city. At the same time, you have, uh, safety under speed humps, they were very effective. The one that we reinstalled, you should continue doing it.
Yeah.
And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jennifer Newton.
My apologies. So, um, good evening, gentlemen. Um, my name's Jennifer, and I, you've met several times. It's okay, I know you just cut out a camera.
I didn't see you at the general election. You were out there in February.
Yeah, yes, I was, yeah. Um, I wasn't well enough to be good for the general. Um, I just wanted to touch really quick on our missing councilman. Um, if I can come in here fighting serious illness, I do believe that our elected officials should give us the decency to show up to the meetings. Um, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate our conversations online this week. And I, I did want to discuss mainly the shooting Thanksgiving morning. I live a block from there. Um, it was the middle of the night, just for myself. Um, is it okay to look at you? Oh, okay, I don't know, I don't talk a lot.
Jennifer, she can talk to you after too.
Oh, no, no, I just, what, I'm just saying, I just wanted to let the chief know that it was the middle of the night, and I don't know about my neighbors, but I know that all I could think to do was jump to the floor because you can't tell how close they are. Um, it does make me feel unsafe, Thanksgiving alone. Uh, we had a shooting, a pedestrian accident involving death and two breaking and enterings. I've, I've been watching the crime log that's put up every day, the breaking and enterings are on the rise. I think that we should make crime a concern. Um, we have a surplus, right? So the cameras could be a good idea. Could I pause it now? Thank you. Um, and, and, and I understand the idea about stop signs, but I'm not sure if anybody on council has seen the video of at Conant and Kniff where six cars back to back to back just ran the red light because they don't care. Um, I'm sure it's young people, young people are, no. Um, but, and calling 911. So when we call 911, it goes to Detroit, we have to ask for Hamtramck? Is there any way to look into having our own dispatch for the police department?
I, I can address that, so. It's about the, um, the cell phone service and the parameters that work the way that our 911 system works. When you get transferred to Hamtramck, you are speaking to a Hamtramck dispatcher. Cell phones are the only ones that actually go to Detroit, um, depending on your proximity. If you're closer to the freeway, it could go to Michigan State Police. However, the good news is, we're working on getting a new 911 system.
Okay.
That has already been approved, and once that comes in, we have taken that, um, those 911 calls will come to Hamtramck. That was an option that we opted in to do.
Okay.
So those calls will eventually come directly to Hamtramck from a cell phone, but it's just a matter of getting the 911 system installed, so.
I just find that, I just found that in a couple instances where I've had to call.
Yeah, and every meeting and things like that, I try to remind the public that you have to ask for Hamtramck, but we do have our own dispatch, so when you do get Hamtramck, you're talking to a Hamtramck dispatcher.
Right, and also in regards to the shooting in front of the library, this is very quick. Um, Steve's Party Store and Kniff Electric have cameras on Kniff that the police could probably utilize.
What's it, Mr. Chair? And also to, to add, you know, uh, our dispatch has actually a phone number, that if, if you want to save it, say Hamtramck Dispatch, it goes direct to our dispatch.
I actually do have that. But there's.
It's too old and not available.
Right, I just, for people that don't know, when it's doing that.
Right, yeah, but thank you.
I know everything, I'm kidding, I don't, I don't know everything, thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank you for reminding that we did approve the 911, uh, development year or two or so.
I, I can, since you're hard, I can give you a quick update of that. It should have been installed in September, however, there is a backorder on the routers that we're waiting for, so until the routers come in, they cannot install that system, so it should have been done in September. Every week I have a meeting with the company, we have Zoom meetings, and they just keep giving, it's a two-minute meeting because they keep telling me the routers aren't in yet. So once those come in, that system will be installed, like, we are, we are ready to go, everything else has been done. They have the equipment, the actual 911 equipment in stock and ready to install, but we just don't have the router, so. Once that gets done, we're hoping for mid-December, if not, it's going to push back to January. So that's an update I have.
Thank you for that, Chief, yeah. Thank you. All right, so we're done with the public, okay? And if you have nothing left, we move to a gentleman.
I motion, sir, good.
Eight forty.
Thank you.
All right.
You talked to me. This is a good suggestion, isn't it?